The time being seven oh three on January twenty third, two thousand and twenty-three. All members of the planning board being present, call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda, agenda item A, approval of minutes from November twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two.
A motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to agenda item B, I'm sorry, let me just do this real quick, just so everybody knows. Agenda items C and D, which are seven seventy Main Street and one eighteen Lumber Lane, both the applicants have requested to be continued to our February thirteenth meeting, so nothing will be heard on either of those tonight, so if anybody's waiting around here or at home watching, we won't discuss those two matters tonight, they'll be at our February thirteenth meeting, okay? Alright, so returning to the agenda, agenda item B one, committee reports, any of the members have any committee reports they wish to make at this time?
All set.
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
All set?
All set.
Alright, moving on to agenda item B two, town plan is required.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, a couple of quick items, I'll actually do them in reverse order just out of interest. Three hundred names pawned the proposed forty B project by the Hanover group, they terminated their agreement with the owner, the landowner, so that project is no longer moving forward, I'm sure folks have seen over the, over the various social media accounts and news outlets that that has ended. Just my own thought that since this project is no longer coming through, it's of even more importance that we continue to be diligent as a town in finding affordable housing opportunities, since we're not going to have this, this one big project. And the only other item I wanted to bring up today is the nine twenty-nine seventy-eight Livingston Street, subdivision plan that was approved last year, or I guess two thousand and twenty-one at this point. They are coming up on getting their building permits for the various homes on that subdivision, and also coming into needing to bring the road to binder and make certain improvements, so that once they start getting occupancy on those homes, you know, they'll be accessible. So in reviewing the original open space residential design special permit with the subdivision, it was noted by the developer that there is a roadway bond required for this as a condition of that special permit, and he brought up the question that if it's a private way, why is there a roadway bond? And I went back and looked at the minutes and did not find specific discussion of it, it seems that it was suggested and approved as kind of a, a typical condition of a subway, a subdivision, and not taking into consideration that it is intended to be a private way in perpetuity. So in working with the developer and the engineering department, I wanted to bring an idea to you folks to see if you would be amenable to it. The, a couple of things I discussed with the developer, he requested the removal of the condition for the roadway bond, understanding that it is a private subdivision, so in an effort to keep things moving, I think that it would be okay to remove that provided that we add these three suggested conditions in its place. So the first one being to revise the homeowners association agreement to include responsibility for finishing the road in lieu of the roadway bond. The purpose of the roadway bond is so that after it's brought to binder and the homes receive occupancy, that should the developer run out of money, abandon the project, what have you, that the town would be able to go in and finish the road properly and make it a public way. If the plans for that are not intended to happen that way, then stands to reason, put that responsibility on the HOA, and they would, you know, assume that going forward. Another would be to require the developer to relocate the driveway for the existing nine fifty Livingston Street prior to gaining occupancy on the construction of that second home in the subdivision. A part of the subdivision incorporated existing properties including nine fifty Livingston Street, so just to make sure that that driveway relocation moves to the new subdivision before they get occupancy on all of the properties. And the third one would be to add a condition that states that the road is to be maintained as a private way in perpetuity. This is explicitly mentioned in the meeting minutes for this public hearing multiple times, but it's not mentioned anywhere in the special permit, which for consistency sake, I think it could be worth adding it just so it's very clear as to why the roadway bond is removed and other conditions that are a part of the agreement. And like I said, if the board is amenable to those changes, I can issue that as a minor administrative modification to the special permit and subdivision approval. The other option would be to request that the developer submit an application for a formal modification if you think it warrants a public hearing. So just wanted to put that up there for you folks, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, alright, so I, I have no problem with doing this, I mean, if, if the developer then doesn't like these conditions, then I get to file and come in, but this would prevent them from having to come in for no, to potentially end up in the same place, so at least they have this. But if they still don't, then it goes come in and talk to us, but there's not much they can do unless they want to actually file and come in. I presume they'd want to avoid that, so I'm fine with it. Mr. Chairman?
Just a couple of quick questions, was there much concern about, I know oftentimes we have people coming overly concerned about traffic density, things like that. I don't know if the, in your review of the minutes, if there was anything indicative of that, that people, if we do this change and people were, you know, concerned about how the, people were going to get in and out of this subdivision, would this, you know, make their case a little bit worse or a little bit better, or no change at all?
There really wouldn't be a substantive change at all, it's only a three additional lot subdivision incorporating two existing homes, and there were no other concerns during the hearing process either. So it's really, I think, from my perspective, and I think from, you know, the developer's perspective as well, is that we're kind of marrying the, the conditions of a private way better with the conditions on the ground, and having them, you know, put up a roadway bond if they are accepting full responsibility for the road is kind of overkill.
Okay, I have no other concerns.
Mr. Val, Mr. Vitale?
Yeah, one question is, do we need this in writing with the developers' okay to sign off on this, or?
I would issue it as a, a formal administrative modification that would have the chair sign it like any other.
But they would be okay with it as well, I think.
I already, I sent this exact language to him last week, and this is something he's okay with, yep.
Okay, so we don't need anything in writing from him saying he approves it, okay?
Mr. Duffy? So I, I obviously wasn't, wasn't a part of that permit process, but the only thing, in the completely unlikely event that this would happen, that the road never got finished, that, and there is no bond remaining, then, you know, things like vehicles tracking mud and so on and so forth from the private way onto the public way, I guess is the only issue that could arise, you know?
Sure, so in putting the finishing of the road on the HOA and having it be their formal responsibility, they would also be responsible for any issues that come from that. And that's why I had suggested that they, they already have a homeowners association document recorded, and I, that was a part of my, my proposal to the developer, was that they have that modified and re-recorded to include all responsibilities for the road.
And is there a timeline on that?
So the developer.
Even for a binder?
Oh, I mean, so they would need to be brought to binder prior to receiving occupancy for all of the homes on that road, which I expect is what they'll probably do anyway. They have already received foundation permits for each of the homes, but they can't move any further until this roadway bond issue is resolved.
Okay, I, I don't have any problem with the, with the administrative change either, I'd be okay with that.
Okay, um, do you want us to just take a vote?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, so we have a motion to, to.
Approve the administrative.
Alright, so approve the administrative change as presented this evening. No, I, you have to make it.
So moved.
Okay, second, alright, good, uh, motion made in second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, perfect, thank you. Moving on to agenda item B three, two fifty-five Salem Street slash border road as built acceptance.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, so just a quick update, we have, we submitted the as-built plan to DPW around Christmas time, get a letter from planning board or from Alex last week, we're still waiting for DPW's letter, so we're not really in a position tonight to review it, but I'll hear if you have any questions. The one item that I just kind of wanted to, to ask about or inquire about is on Alex's letter number three. I think the way the special permit was written is captured in this note where the open space to lot one, which is, if you're looking at the road, it's the right-hand kind of corner that we needed to flare out to address an engineering question, it's a very small area, I don't have it on here, maybe twelve hundred square feet, give or take, but I think when we did the, the original permit process, that was to go to lot one. I talked to Carl, the developer, since then, and his thought was that that could go to the homeowners association as, as with the other two open space lots, so just kind of wanted to ask you before we came back with other items technically to address DPW, if that was a concern, or if you'd be okay with that.
Do you, I don't recall why, we did it with lot one as opposed to the others?
It was two thousand and sixteen, I, I haven't looked back at the minutes, I don't know either, I just know that it does, yeah, it says it has to go to, yeah, the homeowner of lot one.
I, I think. I don't know yet, at least for me, I'll go back, I'll go around the table, but the one thing is maybe between now, because you're going to have to come back, we can't be done with this anyways. We can see how people feel about it, unless we find out something different, that's, that's where I'm going to come down is, if we go back and we check the minutes and we had some particular specific reason why we did it that way, I can't remember either, I'll be honest with you. So, as long as that's not the case, I have no issue, Mr. Duffy?
No, I, I guess I, I would like to not see too many, what, what's the status on the change for the open space on lot one there? Or is that, or is that not changing at all?
So the status, what, what I'm asking is that instead of it going to the lot one ownership, to the people that own lot one, is that it would go to the open space, which is owned by, I think there's, there's four lots altogether. And I, and I'm not sure why that was written that way, and the only thing I can think about is, I know we, we modified the alignment a couple of times as we went through the process to address DPW comments, it might have made sense with one of the layouts, but I didn't, I can't remember.
And what, what's the purpose of trying to divide up the open space to the four lots?
Um, I, so the perp, I guess the intent would be, since we have open space of, we have a homeowners association that takes care of the open space altogether, which is four lots, it just kind of makes sense to include this open space parcel as part of that, to make sure that it does get maintained, as opposed to putting it, the burden on one homeowner.
Okay, I, I'm with the chairman though, I think, I think we'd like to.
Sure.
Yeah, dig a little deeper on, on that.
Mr. Vitale, I'm all set with the, with the suggestion Mr. Handley made about adding it to the opens, to the homeowners association, it makes sense. Let the homeowners association take, take care of it, cut it, whatever they got to do to it in perpetuity, so I'm good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I, I agree that it makes more sense to have this be maintained by the homeowners association along with the other open space areas, rather than placing that entire burden on one particular property owner.
Alright, Mr. Val?
Ditto.
Alright, so pending finding out some specific reason why we did that.
Yeah.
I think you've got a tentative, okay?
Yeah.
Alright, and the rest is for you to settle up with DPW and whomever, alright? Alright, thanks for that one, you're here for the other one too, right?
Yeah.
Alright, moving on to agenda item B four, one thousand nine Livingston Street as built acceptance.
Um, so that one there, we did get a letter from both Alex and from DPW. We got it on Thursday of last week, there's a handful of comments, we need to go back and forth with DPW, so we're not in a position again to ask you for consideration for reduction of bond and support for making it a public way, so hopefully we can be back in two weeks and have some answers for it.
Alright, okay, then, we'll see you in two weeks and hopefully further along in the process, okay? Alright, enough.
Thank you.
Those, that'll bring us to agenda item C, which is seven seventy Main Street, which as mentioned earlier, will be continued to our two thirteen meeting. So could I have a motion to continue this to seven PM on February thirteenth? I have a motion made in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. That'll bring us to agenda item D, which is one eighteen Lumber Lane, same status, that can continue to two thirteen, so we have a motion to continue that one to seven ten on two thirteen. Motion made?
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Bringing us to agenda item E, which is twenty-five oh four Main Street, site plan review. We have a motion away from a public reading.
So moved.
A motion made, right, second? Motion made in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Alright, so if you state your name for the record, who are you?
Sure, Jim Hanley, civil design consultants, and I'm here on behalf of FTO Realty Trust, the authority who's also here in the audience tonight, so the property is located at twenty-five oh four Main Street in South Texas, it's the old Sal's that I think has been shut down for the better part of a decade anyways. Fifteen hundred square foot building footprint, built in nineteen eighty-nine. Tonight, basically, I just kind of want to go through existing proposed conditions and let me review the process. Why we're here tonight is that we're proposing a change in use for a building that has an excess of a thousand square feet. So that requires the site plan review. We're located in, in, what do you call it, in South Village Business District. We have a lot that's approximately sixteen thousand square feet in area with approximately one hundred and fifty feet of frontage on Main Street. And the existing use that's out there today that isn't actually being used is the old Sal's pizza pop. The way the site currently lays out right now is that we have eleven parking spaces out there. This is like one of these jobs that we inherit, a site plan that was designed thirty years ago, standards were slightly different, and maybe not as rigid as they are today. But what we're trying to do is improve the site to the maximum extent practical, and still accommodate the proposed retail use. So what are we doing? We're maintaining the existing fifteen hundred square foot footprint, plus or minus. We're going to maintain all existing utilities, so gas, the water service, the sewer service, electric telephone cable, all of that is currently in, and we're not proposing any changes to that. What we are proposing to do, proposing to improve, is the site plan that's in front of you right now, the proposed site plan has eighteen parking spaces. Currently, there's eleven out there, to satisfy the demand for retail use in that district, for that size, we would be required twelve parking spaces. So we have a hundred and fifty percent of the minimum required parking for the proposed use at that location. One of the other improvements that we've been able to make is increase the, the open space that's out there. Currently, we have less than one percent open space onsite. Basically, the entire parcel is either paved or rooftop. So we have zero point seven five percent of the parcel area, thirty percent is required in this zoning district, with some adjustments to the layout, traffic flow, parking location, in just an overall attempt to soften it up, we've been able to bring that up to sixteen point two, which is an increase of about twenty-two percent. Now, we're still short of the thirty percent, and that's why we are requesting that waiver. But keep in mind, it's an existing non-conforming dimensional waiver that we'd be requesting. We've also been able to reconfigure all the parking spaces in the driveway aisles to conform to the current zoning regulations. So this is a little unique in that we have one-way traffic flow around the building, parallel parking, which is something that we generally attempt to avoid when we do new construction, but in a situation like this, where we have lot lines that are already in place and a building that's already in place, we basically do the best that we can, and what we've been able to do is maintain the minimum width requirements and the minimum parking space requirements, size requirements, and, and increase it from eleven to eighteen. We've also been able to bring the site in the building upset in ADA compliance. So currently, there's, there is no way for a handicapped individual to get from the site into the building through a, an accessible path, and we'll be providing that in the left-hand side of the front of the building. We have a note on there that indicates where that path would be. We've also made an attempt to clean up the entrance. If you've been out there, you're, you might be aware, you might have noticed that the entrance into this particular parcel basically has like a wide mouth, right? Typically, we try to do twenty-four, we try to get as close to ninety degrees as possible. We've tightened this up as much as we can to stay within the property line limits, but also provide a ninety-degree off of the driveway into the site, so we tried to make some improvements there. We've adjusted the existing edge of pavement that runs parallel with Main Street. So currently, right now, based on the survey that we have and the alter that was done for the sale of the property, the curbing on our side of the site for our parking lot is actually plus or minus two feet into the right-of-way, the state's right-of-way, right, because that's thirty-eight. But we've been able to kind of modify that a little bit and get a little bit of, basically get our parking spaces on our own lot. And then we've reduced the impervious surface by about eleven percent, or seventeen hundred and twenty-five square feet. So, you know, this is one of these sites, we come to you every once in a while, that's existing, different design theories and regulations at the time, try to apply the current stuff to this site as best we can, you know, short of knocking down the building and buying more land. So we got two review letters, we got one review letter by DPW, and essentially, we don't have any exceptions taken to that. We'll work through those technical comments and have plans back to them, you know, maybe next week, give or take. There were a couple of things on Alex's letter, the planner's letter, that I, I guess I just kind of want to maybe talk a little bit about when I wrap this up here. One was a recommendation, I guess, or consideration for traffic. Certainly, we'll do what the planner wants, what the board wants. In, in my opinion, you know, we're going from eleven to eighteen spaces, I don't think we're really going to have an impact on traffic, certainly on thirty-eight in that location that would warrant that, but it's something that's in the letter, so I just wanted to address that. There were also a hand, a couple of waivers that, that we would need. And so I, I always kind of get confused on this, in the need for it, when you have an existing non-conforming site and you're not making it more non-conforming. So if nothing were to change there, those waivers would be, those waivers are, they're either already granted, or they're, they're pre-existing non-conforming. So is it, is it, is it a requirement for those waivers when we improve the site based on the current regulation? So that's just something I kind of wanted to, I, I don't, I don't know that, I think it's more of a legal thing than an engineering thing, but I wanted to just kind of bring that up and make sure I understood it correctly.
Did you already have an answer?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I've done two seconds, right? So just in conclusion here, we're, we're only here for the site planner review, in full transparency, this would be a site plan that would eventually, potentially, if, if you were to grant it, go on to the recreational marijuana potential use, and we'll continue to go through that process with that. But right now, it's just a typical site plan review. Property has been vacant and abandoned for the better part of a decade, we think we have a plan that works and will satisfy the proposed use, and we tried to make improvements to the existing site as much as, as we could and still kind of get the use out of it that, that we need. So with that, that's all I got, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them for you.
Did you want to just answer that first, and then we'll go around the room?
Sure, so I spoke to the building commissioner about that exact issue, and where site plan review and approval is required, all portions of and provisions from the bylaw have to be met, even if it's a pre-existing non-conforming structure.
Okay.
So unfortunately, some stuff does end up having to be rehashed and does require waivers. The issue with the thirty percent minimum open space is that's dimensional, and it's not specifically called out as wavable, so that would have to go to the ZPA for a dimensional variance. That's, and that's a matter of process, the, the zone bylaw does not give the planner or the authority to do dimensional variances, unless expressly in the, in the footwork, where sometimes they're allowed to, you know, make the height, increase the height, or reduce setbacks on certain things, but unfortunately, this is a newer dimensional aspect that we're not used to from the old bylaw, the old bylaw, and we had maximum lot coverage, and now we have maximum lot coverage and minimum open space. So that's going to just be a matter of mechanics that will have to go to the ZPA, that's all.
Okay.
So just before, before I start, just because, if you could run the number quicker than you can. You said we need twelve spaces?
Yes.
To be compliant?
Yes.
Would you have eighteen?
Yes.
If you lost the other six spaces, how much open space do you pick up?
Yeah, so we went through that exercise on Friday after Alex's letter. We could make some changes to the plan, I'm just going to approach it here, it really would impact the, the site. We'd basically, for the most part, have to, have to dead-end this, and we'd have to dead-end this somehow, which I think, you know, there could be a benefit to that, right? Because this is a, a bit of a challenge, how it's currently laid out, so we kind of take that challenge away. From, from our perspective though, we go from eighteen down, we, we should be able to squeeze in the twelve, but that's, we wouldn't have any extra at that, so it would be a fairly significant change.
Well, I'll do it when I come back around, I don't want to jump the gun here. Let's start, Mr. Vitale?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Mr. Hand, Mr. Handley, you're saying you need, you need twelve spaces? Yes. Is that counting employees or non-employees? Um, I believe we applied the, I just want to look at my reg, Mr. Vitale, I don't want to speak yet. So we have five spaces per one thousand square feet for the first, for the first ten thousand square feet of GFA. For here is twenty-five. When three oh eight, we have, so we have, we have, what we're required is eleven point five based on the floor area, twenty-five thousand square feet. That, the, the first floor, and I could have Mr. Vardy approach if, if he wanted to, but the first floor is essentially fifteen hundred square feet, give or take, and then the upper floors make up that additional area. So is it fair to say that the first floor is the floor that would be open to the public? That's correct, okay. So, so five.
So answering my question, how many employees are going to be on site on a, on a regular day?
In an eight, one of five, five to six.
Okay, so you have, you have twelve, now five employees needs cars possibly, right?
Well, well, so I think the way, if, if we were going to look at it from that perspective, I think we look at the, the first floor, which is fifteen hundred square feet, and you need five per one thousand, so that's seven and a half, right? And then if we have these five employees, give or take, we're right at twelve.
So when is the public park, when they come in, I mean, you're, you're looking at a retail facility that's going to be changed from pizza to retail.
Yeah.
You don't think you need more than seven parking spots for a retail facility, a given hour, or?
Yeah, I, so I think, I think.
For whatever retail it is.
Yeah.
Remind marijuana, which is no.
Yeah, I think that, I think that our goal, right, is to make sure that we comply with your bylaw, and, and my goal is also to listen to the person who's going to run the operation, right? So, so we, we knew we needed twelve to satisfy the bylaw. What the exercise we went through, anticipating that, that parking is generally a consideration with the board, was to try to figure out a way to maximize it. In this, some of the layout there is a bit unconventional, but we were able to get up to eighteen. So now it's a matter of, do we, do we reduce that eighteen? But then, and not have, not have to deal with the open space waiver, right? But do we keep the eighteen and just cut it as much as we have to? And that's kind of a conversation that, you know, we choose.
Okay, so you're looking for a waiver also to be within five feet of the parking lot?
Because existing, right, so existing is, so, so we've, we've made the improvement, because currently, the parking lot is in the right-of-way.
parking lot is in the right-of-way, right? So we've taken it upon ourselves to like try to clean that up as much as possible, so there, there are some of these moving parts here. So we would be looking for those waivers as well.
Yes, well.
Yep.
We had a meeting, I mean, a discussion last week about same exact request for five foot from the parking lot. I don't think I'd be in favor of that here either. But then I must have, Chairman, I hear you have a lot of comments coming up from Mr. Hager and so forth, so I love my colleagues, so I'll speak.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, just some observations. I know we have a fairly lengthy memo outlining a lot of the issues, which speaks for itself. The, you know, the, as far as gaining the open space requirement, how far off are you now? It looks like you're at sixteen percent of the total area and you need to get to thirty.
Right. So it's like twenty-five hundred square feet, give or take.
Right. And in order to achieve what you're talking about, you're going to close off, what, twenty-five percent of the entire lot and make that open space?
It was one, so, so I think the question was, can you do it? Can you, can you achieve that, that thirty percent? I think we can. How exactly we would do it, I don't know yet, because we looked at it for about an hour after we got the letter.
Okay. I mean, I think, in the, in the sense of some larger concerns of like where are you going to put the bicycle racks, how are you going to close the dumpster? And Ms. Lauder, has the fire department reviewed the, the pattern for getting in and out of this site?
Yes, and because it's a pre-existing site, unless there were changes like Mr. Hanley mentioned, closing off certain portions, the site as it is, they did not have any comment.
So, yeah, basically, I guess, if you, you know, having parking spaces within five feet of the lot line, if there are extra spaces, then, you know, I'd like to try and do whatever can be done to be in conformance. I'm new here, so, you know, my preference will typically be, show me what it looks like in conformance, show me what you would like, and then let us evaluate the difference and see which serves the greater good for Tewksbury, your customers, your traffic, all of that. I think your fifth parking spot, parallel parking spot probably is a non-starter, because if somebody parks an F-150 in one of those, in that third head-on space, that other person is not going to be able to parallel their way out of there. So you might, that last spot, I mean, might just be the way it looks visually, but.
Yeah, like I said, it's, it's not something we would propose on a fresh site, but it complies, so we tried to maximize what we can. And I think generally, without, without the F-150, I think generally it'd, it'd be okay, but I hear what you're saying.
One other question I have, is there, typically, I guess, just in relation to the parking, if we take the twelve spaces, allocate five for employees, now you have seven for customers. I mean, you know, what, what are we thinking as far as a turnaround time for that? You know, I know it's a lot different than when retail marijuana shops first opened and they had lines and appointments and all of that, but, I mean, we do have other parking for other tenants in that plaza.
Right.
And I don't know how busy everything is, but I know parking can get kind of contentious between neighbors at times.
So you're saying the turnaround time and the customer, is that the?
Yeah. Will seven spots be sufficient to service your clientele, or are they going to overflow into one of the neighboring lots and therefore maybe cause some friction?
Yeah, okay. So I'd like to kind of coordinate with the developer on that maybe and get back to you the next time we come.
Okay.
That's okay, yeah.
And then I just had one specific question about the second, well, the first, the, the new plans, which is, I just want to make sure I'm not missing anything here, but the only restroom is on the second floor. Is that correct?
Not sure.
Which means if, is there a restroom on the first floor that I missed? Bench seating, sanitation area, fulfillment room, loading.
Is it the bottom left, sir?
Of the proposed first- Proposed first floor. Are you looking at the existing plan, Mr. Chairman?
I think so.
Yeah, they gave us the existing plans and new plans. So I'm looking at the proposed first floor plan, which is drawing A5.
Yeah, that's how it appears. I don't see a bathroom on the first floor.
Okay. I don't, I don't pretend to know what the ADA regulations are as far as customers.
Yeah.
But if you have an employee that for some reason is not able to get up the stairs, that would prohibit them from being able to work, especially if they're a current employee and something were to happen, that would cause them to have issues with stairs. So again, I don't know if it's within our purview to suggest concerns about ADA regulations and whatnot, but it kind of just stood out to me.
Sure.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, just, Mr. Duffy?
I, I just have a couple of quick questions, and I'm sure that Mr. Hardeman has probably already kind of addressed them with you. I'd just like to see what you're thinking about this is, on, on a positive note, I, I guess I'm glad to see, I guess I'm kind of okay with the waiver, looking for the, to reduce the thirty percent to fifteen percent where it's an existing building, and fifteen percent is certainly better than point seven percent in, in previous area. I think a little bit helps. So I think I'm okay with that. And I'm not sure, did you just mention that there is a loading area on the newer plan? Because that was one of his concerns.
Yeah, no, that, that's one of the comments, and essentially, we're going to load, well, it, it matters how we change the site here. Currently, I think they load in that area there. So they would load off hours, right? So we wouldn't have a public in the parking area when they load. But we will show that on the plan. Once we take into consideration how we're going to modify this. But it's not a sign, it's not a, it's not a striped loading area, it's just an area that's specific for loading when they need to use it.
Right.
Yeah.
Is that going to be outside of normal operating hours, you think?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It would have to be. Even if we don't make any changes here, if we had even a van the size of a FedEx van or something, it would stop traffic, right, from circulating around, so we wouldn't want that, so, yeah.
And then what's the, what's the game plan, Mr. Hanley, on the, on the access easement? It appears that it's-
Yeah.
You have some work to do there.
Well, I, yeah, I, I don't know that. I think that these are the things that sometimes happen between a design and when they actually put the stuff in the ground, especially thirty years ago, right? So we have rights to that area. The existing entrance doesn't, doesn't go all the way to the access, so neither does the proposed. We could make those modifications to change it. I think it actually works better how it's, how it's designed right now. I, I'm going to kind of like defer on that too, because I, I'm not sure the legal, you know, considerations for that. They certainly have rights to get to their property and back, and because the easement doesn't go all the way, I'm not sure how that impacts it.
Now, that easement, was that something that was recent, or is that?
My understanding is that that was part of the original plan, so I don't, I don't think it was recent. But, but when we address Alex and DPW's comments, we'll, we'll, we'll coordinate with the attorney and try to figure out what the right way to approach that is.
Okay. Yeah, because the whole thing doesn't make much sense if you can't get where you want to go.
Yeah, right, right, exactly, yeah.
Okay, that's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Fall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Most of the questions I had have been addressed, i.e. parking and visitor and employee parking. What is the ability for you to have, to use some of the condo parking?
We're investigating that right now.
Okay.
So I don't have the answers for you tonight.
Okay. All right.
But that's an ongoing discussion.
You heard I had a question. And that would probably iron out a lot of your problems.
Yeah, I think so, right.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
All right, so I don't, you're going to have to solve that issue, but obviously, you create one other probably. If you do that, it's providing a, you know, some pathway-
Yeah.
-for getting there that's safe, so-
Yep.
Just keep that in mind, that way you don't come back in and then we send you back out with that comment. So obviously, you know, the way I understand it for the planner is that five point three point three is not for us to waive. It's going to be a decision between, not really so much a decision, it's more a matter of how you want to deal with it with, you know, going to the Board of Appeals.
Yep.
The one thing I would say, and I don't know, it hasn't come up before, to be able to really do this, is that, you know, I, I don't know if we can, or if we'd be interested in even, but I would be, that's why I'll say it now, is that, you know, any kind of recommendation from us that in terms of how we think this might work, and them giving the, you know, potential waiver, you know, I, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be opposed to splitting the difference either. So you don't have to get rid of all of those spaces to get all the way to thirty, if they're willing to give you a waiver at some other percentage. I'm not, you know, I'm not opposed to that.
Okay.
Because that's, that's a them issue, you know what I mean? So they can give you whatever number and then you come back with that to us. So keep that in mind when you discuss it with them.
Okay.
You know, that I think, obviously, we'd like to see more spaces.
Yeah.
So losing them all just to get to that number, if they'd be inclined to work with you on a different number, you know, I don't have a problem with that. When I come back here, I'm not going to be mad because you didn't get to thirty.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So, I mean, it's kind of a challenged lot, you know? I mean, there's a benefit to be able to reuse a piece of property rather than, you know, going from scratch somewhere else, because then we're still going to have this waiting around, sitting around to hopefully deal with, but who knows when? So, you know, that's, that's it on the five point three one. I'm pretty sure all the rest of them are ones we can do if we want to, so I'm not going to get into them for now, and get to that, but at least it's for us to deal with. But the one thing I will say on those is, you know, and this, this also goes to the parking a little bit, is that we, we just passed the new bylaw. And we had a lot of conversations about parking and whatnot. We created a set of numbers to tell people how many parking spaces they need. To then hold you to a different standard, I'm uncomfortable with that, because if we tell you you need twelve and you provide twelve, to say you need more is us going against the bylaw that we just yelled at you for not complying with on a different one. So I get uncomfortable with that, because we just had the bite at the apple to change all the parking requirements all we wanted, and then we passed it. So whatever the numbers are, they're up to date as far as I'm concerned, they're not old, they're not out of date from some bygone era of parking. We just did it. So I, I'm really uncomfortable when we do that, because to hold you on one and then tell you, well, no, but we want this much more on another one, you know, one or the other, you know what I mean? So I, I'm not going to, if you reach the twelve, as far as the parking goes, you've reached the number our bylaw told you to reach. I, I'm not going to go pushing harder than that. I'd prefer you were at the eighteen, because I just think that works better, but that's just because you were able to get to eighteen. You might not be able to when you have to deal with a different issue. You know, and the reason you have to deal with that other issue is because the bylaw is telling you to.
Yeah.
So, you know what I mean, I can't do, I can't do both. I, I've got to, you know what I mean, I've got to come down on one or the other. As far as the two, you know, the parking coming close, again, you know, this is an existing site. I'm not sure who's going to be able to come in here and put in the parking and not have that happen. So we're going to deal with it either with you, or we're going to deal with it with the next petitioner or the next petitioner. It's an existing lot that's been used. You know, I don't have an issue with, you know, where it is, if the spaces go and they're in that, so I don't have an issue with that waiver for, for that reason. This isn't from scratch and you just stuck everything there. This is, you know, you're, you're working with the fact, the building is where the building is. If you're going from scratch, you know, we can ask you to move that around and find a better configuration, but you, you're kind of stuck with what you have, but now with the new rules. So I'm, I'm not going to have a huge problem with that if you can work out your, your I mean, I suspect that you're going to, you know, you're going to figure out your access issue, so that's really for you guys and then you can come back. On the traffic thing though, I mean, you mentioned that at the beginning. I, I don't know about everybody, but I mean, I think we'd bet, we'd kind of rather know upfront, only here, for the other reason is that you could be asked for it later anyways. So if you get rid of it now, then that answers, that question's dealt with, you don't find out at the end, when you're in front of a different board, that they want to know about traffic, and you're just running it again anyways. You know, I mean, you know, this, this is a new, this is a new process, it's a new thing. My guess is that most of, you know, most, everybody's going to look to cross the Ts and dot the Is on this.
Okay.
So, you know, I'm sure most of us would like to know about the traffic, you know, since you can be asked for it at a later date anyways and you may find yourself in that position.
Sure.
I just assume that we deal with it upfront and then, because we're the ones who're used to dealing with the traffic stuff anyways, so. Most of the rest of it's for you to deal with elsewhere and, you know, figure out where you stand in the end of it. I will say that on that discussion about the way you might put the open space if you can, I'm not opposed either to try to get it on that backside, because obviously, that's the side of the property that butts, you know, a, a non-commercial abutment, you know, I mean, that just is this, that's where it is, that's fine. You know, it doesn't make what you're doing wrong, you know, we already zoned it that way. It's just, if given the opportunity to put it someplace, that side closest to the abutment makes the most sense to me, because who's it, who's it really benefiting on the parking lot side? You know what I mean? So, you know, just a little, you know, little something maybe on that side if, if, if it's going to have to go someplace, so. But other than that, I think I'm all set for now. With that, I'll open up the audience. Anyone in the audience have any questions, comments, or concerns on this? All right, seeing none at this time, bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board assisting? I presume you, you want to come back in the next meeting, right?
Yeah, we'd like to, at least Friday, yeah.
So, most of we close the public hearing?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Get to that one. We'll continue it to our next meeting.
Continue to our next meeting.
At seven fifteen, does that work?
It does.
All right, so we'll continue this to seven fifteen on the, the thirteenth. That motion is made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion paid in second, it will also be signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, all right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks. All right, we'll move on to agenda item F, which is Foster Lane. This is a continuation from our one-nine meeting, it's a land disturbance department. Once you're all settled, just to keep you near for the record, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. My name is Kelvin O'Brien from O'Brien Homes. I am the applicant on this property. At the last meeting, there was five items that the engineering department wanted to resolve, are addressed. They have all been addressed on this plan.
Okay, I have nothing else? Okay. How much you have questions? Well, just, I'll just make the clarification that in the conversations and discussions to clear up any confusion from the last time, it's my understanding that the recommendation was to, to have this only referencing the actual property and not Foster Lane as the previous plan had, so just for anybody who doesn't know what the color change is meaning, that's what that means, that purple section originally was in the plan the last time as part of what was being requested for the approval of the land disturbance. That section has been removed, and so it is strictly for the actual piece of property. The rest to be determined and discussed and sorted out elsewhere and not here.
That is correct.
Okay, so, all right, with that, we'll bring it up to the board. We'll start with Mr. Chairman. Okay, so, alright, with that, we'll bring it up to the board, we'll start with Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have no additional questions on the land disturbances portion of the review.
Alright, uh, Mr. Duffy.
I, I have no questions on it, on it either, I guess it's kinda the land disturbance itself on the parcel, um, not involving Foster Lane seems to be pretty cut and dried there. I guess I'll leave it at that, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fattal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So am I correct in the assumption that you want to disturb only the land that you own?
That is correct.
Right? And not the entranceway to the land from the street?
That is correct.
Okay. So how do you propose to, if you don't get that particular access to the property from the street, I mean, a land disturbance permit and everything you're doing on the property is all null and void until, until you get that squared away. So, I mean, why would you wanna move ahead like that, just, just curious?
Because I'll get the application in and I'd like to get a result.
Okay. I just have a, I mean, I just don't, I don't know, but, uh, I've just not, I don't think it's, I'm, I don't, I'll let it go at that, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fowler?
Well, I wasn't here when this came up, so I'm in the dark a little bit here. Yeah, I just saw this package today and this sheet tonight. So I don't wanna speak either way.
Okay. So, uh, the, and this is, again, this was just to recap again a little bit from last time, is that the land disturbance permits are a little bit an oddity for us, because, you know, they're for us to handle, but we've kind of taken them over completely. In the past, we sort of gave them as a matter of course, because it ended up being dealt with really elsewhere. Uh, but now we've got it sort of fully backed up. It's one of those things where we're only talking about the land disturbance permit, the four corners. Anything beyond that, at least for this permit, doesn't matter. It's like, it's, it's similar to when we do an A and R plan, in that it either meets or it doesn't. If it does, we sign off. If it turns out that there's some issue with building or something like that later, that's else, that ends up getting dealt with elsewhere, we simply have the A and R in front of us. So it's a similar type idea in that if they meet what's being required for the land disturbance, you know, and it answers sort of Mr. Fattalia's thought, is if he wants to disturb his own land, I mean, and then never be able to get access outside there, that's certainly, I mean, is prerogative. It, you know, obviously that seems like a cost that would be, you know, wasted, but that's not for us to decide, that's for the property owners to decide. The rest of it is to be dealt with somewhere else amongst others. And in the event they ever get that sorted out, then maybe he has to come back to us for something else. Just the land disturbance part's taken care of, so. It's from that perspective, and since the requirements and the requests have been met, you know, I'll, I'll rule only on that, because that's all that's really in front of me. And then we ignore the purple, because it's no longer in front of me. But otherwise, I have nothing else, so I'll open up the audience, anyone with any questions, comments, or concerns?
Is there a microphone up there for him?
Oh, no, that's right. We do, if you don't mind, if you wouldn't just step out just for a second, so we can allow the person who wants to speak to use the microphone. It is possible it would be picked up, I have no idea, but I just assume, have you come on over and we'd be sure. Hopefully we'll be back in the big room soon.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Plunkett, my address is two fifty-seven Fifth Street, Tuxbury, Massachusetts, I appeared at the last meeting. You know, as I had stated that time, there is an issue that was resolved back in nineteen ninety-four, specifically stating that the Twist Lot, which is the locus, AKA College Lot, has no right of access to the lot over the area known as Foster Lane. Uh, at the last meeting, there was a indication that the town council was going to issue an opinion, and that I would receive a copy of his opinion. I hadn't received anything relative to any opinion issued by the, uh, by the town council. Certainly, it raises some questions relative to the application as was submitted to the board. One of the questions that came up at the last meeting was, did you have any feedback from abutters? And I came and I looked at the application and the, uh, the abutters list, the only app, the only list that was requested and, and on file was specific to the lot owned by the applicant, and therefore there were only four people, four names on that list, one of them being the owner of the lot, the other being the town of Tuxbury, leaving twelve lots. And you have in that application, a nine hundred some odd square of length of roadway, which is over seventeen thousand square feet, and therefore no one was given notice or abutting that area of land of seventeen thousand square feet. For the first time here tonight, that now there's been a change, so I don't, you know, is that a material change of the application that should be re-submitted and re-noticed? I don't know, again, I haven't seen the, uh, anything from the building, not from the commission, from the town council, uh, that he was said that he was going to issue a, uh, a letter of opinion as to whether that access issue is something that can be put aside relative even to the land disturbance within the lot itself. So there is still some questions that I, I don't know that I have the answers to.
Well, as far as the piece that's removed, since we're no longer dealing with it, I'm not, I'm not gonna address it any further, since it's been removed from what we're considering. So, anything to do with the, what's shown on the map is purple, it's no longer in front of the board. So, other than that, and we were given no indication from town council that there'd be any issue with continuing with the piece that's simply the piece owned by the applicant. So, barring any comment that he would've sent us, um, I'm gonna go forward with just dealing with the, what's shown again in green on there now, which is the piece of property that the petitioner has, not the access piece or questioned access piece shown as purple and no longer part of the application for the land disturbance permit.
And is there a written directive from the town council?
So I met with town council again last week, um, just for the benefit of everyone in the room, in researching the issue surrounding abutters to Foster Lane in this case, looked at the definition of an abutter in the land disturbance permit provisions, just chapter nineteen of the general bylaws, and that only calls for direct abutters, which actually captures the same people that are caught by the one hundred foot that we do as a matter of just lining up abutters lists with conservation, 'cause it doesn't call for, let me step back. So, basically, it only requires for direct abutters, but we always recommend that they do one hundred feet, 'cause it matches the conservation of butters lists. So in capturing one hundred feet from the lot in question, it does capture the direct abutters to Foster Lane. Um, and it whole-
To Foster Lane?
Yes. Direct abutters, meaning what touches it. So what touches it are the same folks that are captured in one hundred feet from the applicant's lot.
I don't agree.
Okay, I'm gonna continue. So in speaking with town council, um, in light of, so again, so in looking at the definition of an abutter in chapter nineteen, I was looking at the definition of an applicant as well, and the applicant definition explicitly states that the owner of record of all land shown on any plan submitted for approval to the planning board, the applicant shall submit the title reference or references from the registry deeds that is indicating the owner of record. Typically, friendage on a paper street or paper streets affords abutting property certain rights to make improvements, however, in this case, there is question as to whether the applicant has that authority. So in discussing that with town council, I proposed three, um, three i, pathways for the applicant to move this either forward or stop it. And I have correspondence that I sent to attorney Borstein, which is the representative counsel for the applicant, Kevin O'Brien, and copied our town council, Kevin Feely. And the three options were as follows, that town council agreed with, was to either, one, move forward with the hearing, but the board may only issue land disturbance permits for land for which Mr. O'Brien has clear title being map, which, uh, map twenty-four, lot twenty-six, the specific lot here, and eliminating any disturbance from Foster Lane for this permit. Item, option two would be to continue the public hearing to a future date to give them time to sort out issues of ownership. And option three was to withdraw the application without prejudice until title issues are fully resolved. And the option one that they're indicating they'd like to move forward with tonight is with the understanding that should they come into the rights to improve Foster Lane, that they may have to make an additional filing for disturbance at that time. But as Mr. O'Brien indicated, they want to close out this public hearing, and that's the path that they have chosen. So, you know, to address attorney Plunkett's comment, no, town council did not issue a written opinion of the proceedings, but he and I had a conversation and he agreed that this was an appropriate path forward.
Okay.
Any else? I have nothing else, just, you know, I was told at the last meeting, we'd have something in writing, a, an opinion relative to the rights of obtaining a land disturbance permit on a parcel, and that the question of access, where there is this decision that specifically states that he has no access over this area known as Foster Lane, uh, that that would be addressed, and if it isn't addressed, just blanket on the record to indicate that, uh, I object to that, so.
Do we know? Do we have any, anyone else with any questions, comments, or concerns? Mr. O'Brien, if you'd just stay in that row just for a second, just so we, until we get through any public comments? Thank you.
How you doing, Mr. Chairman and board members? My name's Chairman Della, I am a director of order of this site.
Uh, we need an address for the record though.
Seventy Johnny Smith, Tuxbury.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I mean, I just found out about this lawsuit with the town that they, twenty-eight years ago got.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll help you a little bit maybe, in saying that at our last hearing, one of the things I said was that we're not gonna relitigate whatever's going on in court here.
Well, well, court's all done, and the judge at the Superior Court stated something.
And as Ms. Latta just pointed out, what we've been advised from town council is, is that for the land disturbance permit that's in front of us, is to make a decision on, again, as I pointed, the part that's in green in the, in the, um, plan that's submitted to us, which is the piece that the petitioner can show title to.
Sure.
That we can make a decision on the land disturbance permit, and the land disturbance permit only. After that, anything else that has to do with access?
Sure.
Or any of that, or whether or not he can ever use the lot, all those questions are to be dealt with elsewhere. This is simply issuing the, the land disturbance permit. The fact that the land disturbance permit may be in ultimately of no use, isn't really for us to decide. But it's not a question of, is it wise, is it unwise, or is it, or any of those? It's simply, did you meet the requirements? If so, we can grant the permit, what happens after that is outside this room. That, that, I mean, not before this board.
Okay, but I don't agree with you, but that's okay.
And I, you are entitled to your opinion, it's just your opinion will have to be sorted out elsewhere.
Well, I do have title, and I do own Foster Lane, all by myself, okay?
Which again, being I, you to deal with.
The conservation committee gave him a permit, and he already cut Foster Lane. He already cut all the trees.
I understand what you're saying, but again, not before this board.
Why was the board when the judge told you not to issue another permit?
Well, actually, this is not the same kind of permit that was issued by the court for the decision you said you just found out about recently. So, that is not what this is. He's not being granted something that's gonna cause him to use Foster Lane to build something.
To get there then?
Not our concern, that, and that's what I'm trying to point out. The, the, the land disturbance permit, it's a four corners thing. We're only looking at that, we're not looking at anything else, we're not giving him any kind of subdivision approval, we're not giving him site plan approval, we're dealing with a land disturbance permit, which ultimately may or may not be of any benefit to the petitioner, I have no idea. But that's not for me to decide. He put in a petition, a petition that we can hear and render a decision on that has specific requirements. At that, what it does for the petitioner is completely up to the petitioner to figure out, and if anyone has an issue with it, to deal with it in the normal course of, you can appeal the decision. Or if it's, if it's dealing with something else, then it is a matter between the property owners and not this board. So I don't know any other way to explain it, like, and I understand that you may be frustrated, as Mr. Plunkett have been, right, at butter. But the problem is, I'm not in a position to rectify the problem either of you has prop, before the board, because it doesn't have to do with the land disturbance permit. That's, that's where hands are tied in terms of what we're dealing with. Everything you're saying might be valid, it's just not what we're hearing, and it's not part of what we can use to make our decision.
How would this board sit here and make a decision on those four corners when he can't, when he can't get there?
Because the petitioner has asked us to render a decision on which we can re, render a decision if he meets the requirements of that bylaw, which, if the board sees fit that he has, they're gonna issue that. Beyond that, we're not giving or taking away anything else other than that permit request. So, then, I don't know any other way to explain, it's just a, it's, it's a, it's, it's simply a byproduct of that petition. If he came in for a different kind, we'd be having a whole different kind of conversation. It's just, that's what we have to deal with. And, and I don't know, I don't know, you know, I wish I had a, a more detailed explanation beyond that, that would satisfy everyone, but that's what we've got, that's what we've gotten from town council, as the advice to the board, because you gotta understand, the problem is, if we simply refuse to make a decision, we have a whole different issue with the petitioner. So we have to do what we're required to do, one way or the other, on what's in front of us.
Okay.
So, is there anything else, or?
Uh, no, I'll just wait and see.
Alright, thank you. Okay, anyone else with any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. And now, Mr. Ryan, you can step back up. Does the board have any further questions for the petitioner? Anyone?
I haven't heard what he, I wasn't here again, so I'm not sure what he proposing.
Alright, so I'm not, I'm gonna need clarification on that, so. For, Mr. Fowler, in order for him to sit in on this and make a decision, would he have needed to have reviewed the previous material?
Yes, and he would've had to certify that he had done that.
Okay, which, I don't feel you could, right?
No.
Okay, so then-
And it's not, it's not a vote of necessity either, so.
Right, alright, so then, I think for, for everybody's purposes, then we'll just, it would be the four.
Right.
Alright, so for that, then-
And he, he needs all four?
No, three.
Okay, so, does anyone else have any questions on what's in front of us?
The, yeah, I just, obviously there's multiple comments here from, um, different people. So, uh, my, my question, I guess, is, um, is this sort of a putting the cart before the horse type of thing? You're asking for the ability to improve the property if you should gain access, which you don't currently have? And there's, and there's nothing prohibiting you from buying a cart before you've bought the horse, but it just doesn't make a lot sense if there's no horses available.
We do feel we have access to the property.
Right, but I'll, I'll stop you with saying what I stopped them though, because we're not having that conversation, and I'll just, again, we have to stick to the four corners of what's in front of us, and whether we think it makes sense or doesn't make sense for an issue beyond the land disturbance permit, not the purview of the board, so I wanna try and keep us from asking questions about parts we don't have anything to do with. Because they just did it to the people who came up and spoke, I don't wanna do it in reverse the other way with the petitioner. We gotta stick to what's in front of us, because it's what we have to rule on, not the wisdom or lack of wisdom or faith or access of things that we don't have hands on. Just stick, gotta stick to this, so. With it, do we have any other questions on the land disturbance permit portion? You're good?
No, I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
I would just like to say that, 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 um, you know, I, I understand that, that we're only in a position to vote yea or nay on the land disturbance permit for the parcel itself, irregardless of any other, uh, issues. But I, but I definitely don't feel really good about that, and I don't feel real comfortable about that. I think it's a, I think it's an issue for, for, for lawyers to, to, to work out. I mean, I, I, I intend to support-
I mean, I, I, I intend to support, uh, the, the land disturbance, but I'm just, I, I just, for the record, just wanna, wanna say that I just don't feel good about it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't necessarily disagree that this might be something we need to take a look at, what our rules are. Cause this feeds into one of our own bylaws that we do have control over. I just feel like we're being put in an odd position to deal with, you know. Or at least a little more, maybe, we need to look at maybe putting a little more detail in it to explain why we make decisions on these, irregardless of side issues that may be connected but not pertinent to this. Just, maybe, we've sat through this now, so we get it. Well, I mean theoretically, we get it. But that's not the case for everybody who comes in here after this, that's gonna have to re- relitigate this amongst the town council and each other and everything going forward. So, we probably should at least try to look at that. I mean, I can't imagine every single city and town or, you know, town has to deal with this like we do.
So, we're, we are actually unique. We're one of, I think, the only community that I've been able to find that has something called the land disturbance permit. It's usually captured in other types of permits, um, typically through the conservation commission or, um, engineering department or some other.
Which is, yeah.
Which is, and, you know, that's where the confusion comes in here is typically, we're dealing strictly with forty A and, and chapter forty-one type applications where this one is a town bylaw and is not subject to the same kind of review. And where we're typically dealing with land use and this is straw water only, it's, I.
So for me, then I guess my recommendation is, let's try to figure out how everybody, how other people do this and see if it doesn't make sense to us to, to do that. Cause I don't know why we're the outlier in this.
That's being reviewed in town.
All right, cause I, I, we're gonna keep running into potential problems like this and, you know, right as it may be for us to issue a decision, the confusion it causes and the consternation that it causes. Because it's gonna be real hard for someone reading this little line in the paper or whatever to understand this. Everybody watching at home who isn't in the room's gonna have a hard time. I, I think we just have to clean up how we do, cause I know, like I said, we used to issue them as a matter of course because it was dealt with the conservation. And that's no longer the case, so now it's kinda back in our court, but I'm not sure it should be.
That is being reviewed internally to see if there's a better avenue for issuing these permits.
I mean, you know, I'm not up for making sure we do things the way everybody else does, but if we're like the one outlier here, it seems a little odd. You know, I like being special and all, but it might not be one. Uh, Mr. Fattali, anything else?
Oh, awesome.
What is the pleasure of the board? This, this time.
Closing.
Closing hearing? I, I'd like to make a motion to close the, closing.
All right, motion made in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, more you can. Now, as to the land disturbance permit and the land disturbance permit only, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion to table it, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, for a period of time until we have a clearer understanding from, um, from planning and, and legal, if that's, if that's a possibility.
Well, we closed the public hearing, so the only thing you really could do is make no motion. But I'm not sure where that leaves us. Because the, the continuing, it would have been done without closing the public hearing. So I'm not sure, the only problem is, and, and we're getting into another discussion with the hearing closed, but I'm not really sure what continuing it con- you know, constantly, because this thing's gonna sit on our agenda in, you know, indefinitely. We're gonna have to keep dealing with it, but yet, nothing about what we're forced to do changes. You know what I mean? Like, even if they solve their issues that they may or may not have, it isn't changing anything about the land disturbance and our requirement to render a decision on it, no matter what happens. So that's, I'm, I'm, I'm leery of that, but I mean, I don't, I'm not sure what to do with, but I'm not sure what to do about the fact that we've already closed the hearing and we're not prepared to do one of the two things you do once we close a hea- hearing.
So the board does have to take action as conservative approval anyway.
All right. So, making sense with the, I'll, I'll make a motion that we grant the special permit as submitted, um, noting the revised plan that was, I'm sorry?
Land disturbance permit.
Yes. Sorry, land disturbance permit, uh, noting the revised plan that was submitted tonight that restricts this application and decision to the, um, property so noted on that plan.
Second.
The motion made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
All right, so that's three to one for the record. So, the application of the land disturbance permit is approved. And everything else is somewhere else.
Mr. Chairman, can I just, just make an announcement? We have, we have a zoning board of appeals meeting Thursday night that has been postponed till February. This piece of property. So I'd just like the people in the room to know so they don't have to waste their time coming to the board of appeals meeting on Thursday night.
All right, outside of our purview, it's public information, I guess, and FYI, but.
Thank you.
We'll take any, uh, take, take anything with the conservation commission's agenda. All right, takes care, agenda out. All right, moving on to old business. Do you have any old business they wish to discuss?
I have a couple of old issues, Mr. Chairman, and, um, one is, um, Ms. Latta, we discussed the, um, Treehouse Brewery and the, uh, headlight issue. Did anybody resolve with that? Cause I still get people calling me, saying, what's going on? What's the new process? And it didn't get resolved, so.
The owners of the property have been informed and they are working out with ideas to, to mitigate that. Um, it being winter, plantings right now are a nuisance, um, but they, they're aware of the issue and um, they actually have a, an application for their common victueller license and alteration of premises this Wednesday, the select board, I expect. Um, they're going to be discussing items like that on Wednesday as well.
Cause the elderly, it's mostly elderly residents that I've been discussing and they, and they are still, you know, uh, having issues with coming around that corner and the headlights just blaring in their eyes and it's gonna cause an issue or problem.
Yep, that was reiterated to the, um, the applicants last Thursday in our meeting with staff and I believe they plan to come right to address that during the common victories here on Wednesday.
So, yeah, all right, good. The other question I had is, um, where do we stand with the tree removal that happened at Main, Main and Pleasant?
Sure. So I sent, as I mentioned previously, I sent a letter to the property owner via email and via um, snail mail as is our regulations. And, um, the assistant town manager also followed up with the property owner. My understanding is their council is supposed to be reaching out to me with a remedy. Um, in fact, attorney Plunkett is the representative for that applicant and he should be sending something along once they've, uh, had a chance to put something together.
So, uh, just for, for both of those, one on the, um, on the tree house, in the event that it is not dealt with, the board is selecting, that does not prevent us from then having them come in because that's one of our, one of ours, right?
Well, so the, the issue with that is, is the way they would remedy that, particularly with plantings or something like that. The plantings would have to be made on their property, so it wouldn't be a part of any landscaping plans they have on their property, which is why I believe, um, they were supposed to be meeting with, um, the, um, the condo association of Eagles Landing before the select board hearing to discuss items like that, to see if they can reach, um, a common resolution because it wouldn't be something that would be modifying their site plan in any way because there's nowhere to put it, cause that's all pavement right there to be able to block headlights.
I'm sorry, I thought we were talking about facing out onto Livingston.
Yes.
Well, you were mentioning that the elderly had, should have changed their house.
I think you said the old, the, the, uh, no, the old elderly driver.
No, 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 the ugly driver was coming down Main Street, coming into Livingston.
Okay, I, I misunderstood. I thought my tongue gets the.
They're getting blocked, they're getting.
No, this is that, that grass piece that runs along the side on Livingston between the delivery and.
Yeah, takeout area.
Okay.
Pickup area, wherever it is, pickup.
Okay, so then, those comments were misunderstood and miscommunicated to Treehouse and I will correct them.
Okay, so, so will we move that process along as best possible? Let, please, I, I, I think this is what we all want, which is to make them aware that they would have to do something. So they should move into the phase of, what is that something? More than likely, we would sus- I think we would prefer plantings, cause it just looks better.
Yeah.
In the worst case scenario, is that some sort of fence, but we don't want that.
They can't actually, because that's too close to the intersection, yeah.
All, all the better then, then. So they need to make sure it's gonna be actually blocking.
Right.
Okay, and then for his, for Mr. Fattali's other comment, uh, again, maybe to make things simpler for when the attorney does get around to contacting you, that I think the board's preference or insistence on this is gonna be that they need to put something back darn close to what came out, cause it's not our fault that someone on their, do, what they were doing took that down. Because we were very clear about it not coming down for a reason. And if there's an issue as to why it came down and whose fault it is, it's for them to sort out.
Right.
But if they wanna go any further on what they're doing, they're gonna have to find some acceptable remedy and not some six-foot tree. Like, you know, we do with a lot of others when we're trying to start out, you know, someone's gonna have to go find something that's a little more substantial, at least from my perspective. I don't know, I mean, we're losing something, I mean, it's probably irreplaceable in terms of anything anywhere really close, but not some sapling that we're gonna wait, or none of us will be around to see creep anywhere close to what was taken down. But, okay, so those are those two, so.
You know, Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, uh, 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 you know, talking about Mr. Fattalia's, um, concerns about the, the headlights. You know, when, when an applicant comes forward, we always talk about light trespass from building lighting and it's always, it's generally addressed in the electrical and the building code and so on and so forth. Uh, but never, you know, traffic type lighting. And I think that that's just something that going forward, if there's a drive-through or, or whatever that we, that we need to consider.
I think we do, yeah. It's just, I think, we were talking about what used to be the country club and when anyone pulled in there in the past, they'd be getting out of their car and going.
Sure.
This is the, this is such a new thing with the pickup and the people being asked to, or instructed to stay in their vehicle and sit there until their order comes out. It really wasn't something that was anticipated, how many years ago? When it was first approved. So, I think that's, I mean, when we have something like, you know, I don't know, I don't have a great example, but when, when we know that the use is gonna be something that might have standing, you know, parking, uh, where people have the lights on, then, yeah, I think we've always brought it up. I know we've been on Walgreens about what they have in their parking lot because, you know, they, you know, when that stuff dies, which is, it's to die constantly.
Burger King.
That we go after them to get that done. It's just now we're just finding out there's a use that requires attention. Because someone figured out that when fifteen or twenty cars sit there and have their headlights on, they're blinding people driving or sitting in traffic at the end of Livingston.
And it's, it's at the end of this, not so much the beginning, cause the beginning part near the building shoots into the parking lot that, uh, where Angelina's is. It's the end where they have lights and it comes around the corner. So the lights are flashing, so as you come around the corner onto, from Main Street down Livingston, you get blinded by the lights, you know, and cars don't shut off their lights.
Right.
Don't shut off the car now, especially in the wintertime.
Well, plus I think too, you, you're talking about, it's not just one car.
No, it's multiple cars.
Fifteen, and then, you know, cause I can't see the headlights, which blind me when they're driving behind me at this point, if they come right in your face as you turn the corner. You know, you can't see a blessed thing. So, yeah, I think they, you know, I, I'd like to see them deal with that old strip pretty much, but it, Mr. Fattali is right, it's gotta be dealt with up at that corner and um, for the folks taking that, that turn, cause they're.
That's a little bit of a stopgap. Could we just issue a memo and recommend that they ask their customers to park tail?
I think we, can we ask them to have them turn the lights off?
Well, no, we just have them park with the headlights facing towards the country club and away from Livingston, so back into the spots instead of pulling in.
I'm, I'm leery of, of giving them instructions on people backing into parking spaces and whatnot. Cause I don't wanna be responsible when someone can't back up for some reason into a space drives over the median and out into Livingston Street because we told them to.
But to tell someone in today's day and age, you shut your lights off.
They can't.
Your car's different than his and his is different than yours and I don't know how to.
It's a little punchline, right?
My lights are on automatic.
Yeah. Yeah.
No, you're right. So, this.
Whatever they can do as quickly as they can do it, basically. So, all right, a new business.
I just had a question, Alex, as, do we have any additional, uh, any other sites coming in? Um, regarding the marijuana site review?
No one has submitted yet.
No, just, just these guys?
Correct. I expect they'll start rolling in soon, but, um, they are the only ones who have actually formally made an application to, um, planning office.
Yeah, okay.
Careful what you wish for.
No.
They're gonna come one way or the other, so.
Yeah. I just didn't wanna have them all be coming in next meeting and not, and that's not knowing, that's all. But nobody else has submitted, so it won't be for a month, anyway.
At least, yeah.
All right, uh, no correspondence in the back?
I, I have a quick correspondence, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just, uh, wanted to let the, uh, you know, the board and the, and the, and the residents know that the, uh, the new tenth edition building code, um, rolled out, uh, January first of this year um, with the Massachusetts amendments. It includes an updated stretch energy code. Uh, Turkford adopted the stretch energy code back in two thousand and eleven. And its adoption along with other measures enabled the town to be designated a green community by the Department of Energy Resources, DOER. This designation opened up grant funding, which Turkford utilized to make energy improvements to municipal buildings. And these grants to date have totaled over a million dollars. And with the implementation of these energy improvements, um, um, it's resulted in, uh, savings of twenty percent or more in energy usage over the last, uh, you know, uh, eleven years, uh, across several municipal buildings and schools. Um, and, uh, there will be more information forthcoming on the Turkford website with some useful links. Just, uh, just so that, uh, homeowners, it's, it's a much more energy, uh, efficiency focused code, a- as they always do. They usually don't go backwards, they go in. They, they're becoming, uh, a little bit more strict and, and, uh, and it should be, it should be, uh, uh, challenging for some and and, and welcoming for some end users out there.
Very good. All right, uh, no other correspondence? All right, with that, we'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved?
Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We'll see you on the thirteenth.